Alrighty, let's begin this meeting of the Harris Township Planning Commission for September 20th, 2021. Let's confirm, first of all, that the people on Zoom and our CNET folks can hear okay and see okay. Amy, how about you?
I can hear.
Okay, Jeff, Jeff Dur?
I'm here.
Randy?
Randy's not on yet.
Randy's not on yet, and Sedalia?
Sedalia's not.
Okay, okay.
Todd's on, make sure Todd's on.
Hi Todd.
Todd gave it a thumbs up.
Okay, great. We have a quorum, let's get, let's get going. Anyone had a chance to review the minutes and do we have a motion to approve the minutes as, as reported?
So.
Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
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 Minutes approved. Public comment, hi folks, thanks so much for coming. Are any of you here for items that are not on tonight's agenda?
No.
Great, so we'll look to hear from you when those agenda items come up during the meeting, if you, if you want to.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Agenda tonight, we've got some business ahead of us, some short, some more detailed. A motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
Amy, did you want to add Spring Creek watershed?
Oh yeah, we wanted to add the Spring Creek watershed commission report to your list of reports, because Bob is our representative to that.
Oh, good, great. So with that amendment, adding the Spring Creek watershed.
Shed.
Shed committee report. Been seconded, all those in favor? Aye? Okay, the agenda is moved forward. So, lots going on in the township last week with rural zoning.
Sure.
And Amy, thanks for the good write-up here. I'm sorry that I was not there, a number of us were out of town or otherwise busy. I think, you know, we've got, there's more work to be done, we're not going to do it tonight, we are going to schedule a joint meeting, or endeavor to schedule a joint meeting of the planning commission and the board of supervisors for next month and dive into that, just explore options to, to move this forward, mapping, some agretainment matters that are needing to be, to be worked through. Does anyone?
I would just say, I would encourage you all, I will send you out the link to the CNET website where you can watch the live stream from the meeting, not the live stream, but their video from the meeting. I would encourage you to watch that before the joint meeting with the board. We did book the fire hall for October the 4th, and we were hoping that date works for the majority of you, it works for the board. It would be October the 4th, we could do 7:00 or 7:30, I just need to confirm with the board. But again, it's the only thing on the agenda, we'll have time to devote to it, I think that would also be good, I think you guys collectively can put your heads together and have an open conversation about that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, let me just confirm that Nigel sometimes has a late bus run, so let me confirm seven works, because the board does 7:30 for their meetings.
Is anybody, everybody here in this, both Zoom and in person, able to attend a week from, yeah, a week from tonight?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from tonight, thank you.
I'm going to pull a calendar. So, I'll have to double check.
Yeah, I, I have to double check my calendar too, I, I'm, will be out of town at the weekend, but should be back. Now, are Zoomers, Zoomers on the planning commission, does that date and time work for you, please?
Yes. Yes, it does for me as well.
And we will have for that meeting a hybrid option as well, so folks don't have to be in person if they don't want to be, or if they can't be.
Okay.
Is my turn or the board?
Yes.
Yes.
It's okay.
Okay, great. We have enough then to.
Okay, so I'll email, I will email the supervisors after this meeting, just to confirm if we want to do 7:00 or 7:30. I'll shoot you guys an email, and I will send you guys the link to the CNET website to watch the video from the meeting. I think it would be good, it's good to watch it, there were some issues that came up, and I think it's important that we all understand that going in.
Yeah.
Can we make sure that there's something in the way of, of a bit more information about the acres law?
Yeah, we're actually in the process of sending the information that was presented by Mr. Immel's attorney to our attorney, because certainly we are not attorneys, and we were also going to seek, see if we could seek an opinion from the Pennsylvania Attorney General's office, they're the ones who enforce the acre law. My understanding of acre has always been that it was more on the commercial farming side, the commercial CAFOs, hog farming, that kind of thing, but certainly we want to find out, because we don't want to set ourselves up for a legal challenge, so we are going to look into those issues that were raised, and we'll have an endeavor to have an answer by October 4th on that.
I watched some of the, some of the meeting video, and it was, yeah, it was interesting, the viewpoints that were shared, the deliberateness of the board of supervisors and thinking and listening to what was going on, and I think not rushing into something, tabling it, or moving it back to a joint meeting with us, makes a tremendous amount of sense. So, unless there's anything else, that's just a discussion item. Okay, let's move on, please, to agenda business item number B, or letter B, official map update. We have a number of detailed Parks and Rec Committee recommendations, staff committees, some of which line up, some of which do not. I think it's not necessary probably for us to go point by point, but perhaps look at, with a little bit more detail at those areas where there's either inconsistency or disagreement between staff and volunteers, or any questions that you guys, you guys may have. And is this agenda item on the official map of interest to any members of the public here tonight? No, okay. Mark, you want to just maybe hit the highlights and then dive into some of the inconsistencies as you see them, please?
Yeah, so the map that was included in your agenda tonight is an updated version of the same map that's on the wall there behind you, so we did add all the new developments that had, you know, taken place since 2008, so hopefully this gives you a little better understanding of where new roads are at, where new residential lots and whatnot have been developed. As was indicated, there are some differences between what the Parks and Recreation Committee and staff felt in terms of some of these facilities, that's not necessarily saying that the Parks and Rec Committee was wrong, we just looked at it from a different viewpoint, we wanted to go through this and try to see from our knowledge what had already been taken care of and what hadn't. So I'll just go through the list briefly, and if there's any that, I'm not going to go through each one, but a couple here that we think maybe are worth looking at. Number two, in particular, this is located just east of Fairfield Harris Acres. It's a road that would connect Outer Drive with Outer Drive, we felt like it was worth keeping. I think the Parks and Rec didn't know if that would ever develop, if it ever does, it makes sense to keep it. Same with number three.
When you said remove.
I'm sorry? Number two, we're saying, keep the roadway connection.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, first is Parks and Rec in that column, second is staff.
Okay, okay.
And then the, the next one is just to the, just to the right of that, a little bit, is, is number three. Again, this is the Biddle Farm, and it would extend Lindwood Drive across to Main Street. We feel like a roadway there, if that ever develops, makes sense, so.
With the, with the actual connection to Lindwood, huh?
Yes, with the actual connection to Lindwood. Where it connects at Main Street certainly could vary, depending on how it properly develops.
Right with the, the cross.
Connect.
Well, that's one of the things to keep in mind with an official map, is that the, the facilities as they're shown, they don't have to be developed exactly as they're shown, it can always be.
The end of Lindwood does have a right-of-way through there, then?
I believe it does, yes, I'm pretty certain.
At the end of Lindwood, that's never been developed, it's the way I understand it, so I don't know whether they were sold as cul-de-sac, or whether there was supposed to be a connector through, but.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look, I thought that it did just dead-end there, and I think there isn't a right-of-way to go across it. So, we can look into it more, I know it was on the 2008 map, so I imagine it had been looked at then. So, let's see here, we obviously have a number of facilities that have been, we're recommending removal, because they've been completed. Number seven, I think is worth noting, this is the bike path along, in front of the Military Museum, and it then continues up down Bull Avenue, and then up past Liberty Hill, and up along the, the highway, as well as the whole way up to College Township, and the whole way out to Phasic Park. We think that certainly it's worth retaining this portions, maybe portions of the facility, and have some modifications, and adding the road diet in there for that section of Bull Avenue would make sense. So, let's see here, I think the next spot where we had, number 11, so this is coming up Academy Street, this is the connection that goes from the top of Academy up to the State Forest, plant, or the Parks and Rec Committee had recommended that it be modified and redrawn to avoid wetland issues. From our perspective, you know, looking at it, these properties are very unlikely to ever develop, and therefore we would never be able to use the official map to actually negotiate for those, so we didn't know if there was much value in keeping it on there, since we would probably never be able to use the ordinance to, to acquire the right-of-way.
So I would say, from the Parks and Rec Committee's side, we, and this has been true since I started in the township 16 years ago, people have always wanted to see a connection to Rothrock State Forest from the village of Bollesburg, we've long talked about that, and we had on the original official map, we had a connection that sort of went across Tory Lane and over that way, but that really doesn't work because of wetlands, there was some exploration done last year when the hiking and biking trails were put in at Harvest Fields. So, I understand the concern and the point, which is that those properties are unlikely to develop, but I wonder if there's another place, and we've talked about maybe doing a connectivity plan, or something like that, if there's another place where we can preserve that connection, because it is so important, I think, to a lot of our community.
Yes, and I would say, you know, Mark, you're saying that it probably wouldn't be, you know, developable, you know, we don't know.
Sure.
We just don't know, and so to keep it open, and maybe that isn't the best place, I am pretty familiar with that area, I'm not sure what, what wetlands above Academy Street.
I'm not aware of wetlands.
Between, between the top of Academy Street and the slope, there, there are not wetlands.
Certainly steep slopes up there.
Certainly there are. Anyway, let's keep, let's keep something that keeps this connection viable still, please.
And to Amy's point too, you know, the connectivity plan might change the location of some of these things, and anything that you decide tonight, it's really just a, we're going to take off the stuff you definitely want off, to remove the clutter, but then we can add, modify, as you decide, and as committees make decisions on how they want to move forward, so.
Can we go back to number 10 real quick, please?
Sure.
Connector road from Academy Street through, it's under construction, at what stage?
Last I was up there, it looked like it was pretty close to where they were going to be putting down at least like sub-bays or something, yeah.
Yeah, there, that's the connection to Springfield Commons.
Right, right. Okay.
So, yeah, back to 11, one concern I would have is if, you know, if you did have a trail connection, then I guess the implication is that people would have to walk from Bollesburg to go up the trail, and that we would, there would not be a parking area, because I don't believe there are any.
So that's interesting, so one of the things we discussed way back when, 2006, '07, and '08, when they were doing the Springfield Commons, the Hawk Bridge development, was getting a linear trail, and then also getting a piece of, in the R1 piece, a piece of parkland that we could have possibly put a parking area, and that was something that we talked about. We'd also talked, you know, a long time ago, about encouraging folks to maybe park in Bollesburg, maybe, you know, at the fire hall or somewhere, and then actually hike across to Shingle Town Gap, or, you know, hike Shingle Town Gap and come across this way.
Yeah, I mean, that's a concern I have, if you had, I'm not saying you should have parking lot, in fact, I would say, if you did, that it could potentially create more traffic going up and down Academy Street, which would raise a lot of controversy, I'm sure. And, so, I just think we'd have to be careful about how it would develop.
They could park behind the township office.
That's right.
You could, yes.
Pretty soon, there'll be lots more parking.
That's right. So I think, we don't have any additional, I think discrepancies or anything between that and facility number 23, it's on the next page.
Just get an understanding.
Sure.
Of those two, a little bit better. So, so that, that is all connected now through Kwood?
Number 17 did not occur, they didn't, they declined to do that, as I recall, because that went through a stormwater basin and other things. And then number 18 would be, it's actually on an adjacent property that's never developed, so if that were to ever develop, I'm not certain who owns that one, just north of the Rocky Farm.
The Lingle.
The Lingle Farm, yeah, so if that were ever to develop, it sounded like the, the Parks and Rec Committee would like to see the.
Is that, is that near the, the access to the Kwood Park that we just approved a few months ago?
I think that access point.
I think it's up above.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's up above, because the Lingle Farm sort of sits in between Linden Hall Road and Rocky Ridge, and it would connect into the backside of Kwood Park. There's some trees on, the, Kwood Park is deceptively large, and there are some trees on the one side, and it would connect through that buffer area there, so it's the opposite end of where that other connection is, Kent.
Okay, alright. You're interested in, in seeing that kept?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just was confused as to where exactly it was, trying to get some perspective on, on a couple areas in this map.
Sure thing. Yeah, I think you can see a little better on the inset, I actually have just realized that.
Oh, there is an inset.
Yeah, tried to provide you a little more detail, because it's such a, such a small map with a lot of detail here on it.
So the next one was number 23, which is kind of in that same area, you can see there on the inset map, this is the trail that goes up along Kwood and the Rocky Farm, and continues on out to Linden Hall Road. The, the Parks and Rec Committee felt they wanted to keep it, but redraw the connection and show a facility along the existing three.
No, that's 24 you're looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was wrong, yes, they just said to keep that one, I'm, I'm sorry. And then, we felt, you know, looking at it, we recalled that when Rocky Farm was developed, as well as the Kwood North Estates, there wasn't an interest from either property owners to provide that, so we felt like it might make more sense to remove, just knowing that, that we had a crack at it, and they, they weren't interested in doing it, and the board didn't withhold approval for it.
Well, I would say one thing, and that is, the open space piece out in the Rocky Farm property, Rocky Ridge, was just purchased by a resident that lives out there, and she's looking at turning it into a natural area, and I put her in touch with Ed Perry from the National Wildlife Federation, and there might be an opportunity to perhaps pursue some greenway connections through there, and I think that's why we wanted to keep that on as well.
Okay, so, keeping it as a, as a pedestrian route, is what you're saying?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Potential.
Potential.
Yeah, that's, I like that.
Okay.
And then the last one was number 24, and I think we're on the same page as the Parks and Rec Committee, but it was really, this is the facility goes from the top of Tory Lane back to Galberth Gap, and, and this, certainly there are some wetlands.
Yeah.
In, along here. Ultimately, I know there was some discussion about maybe showing a facility along 322 to connect to Bear Meadows Road, you know, maybe that connectivity plan would define another location where a trail could possibly go up that way as well, but in its current alignment, we felt like it probably was unlikely, so maybe removing it, but having it updated then later, once a connectivity plan is done.
We, I think from the Parks and Rec Committee, two things, we, they really do want to see, and we've talked with PennDOT about this in terms of the 322 connector project, we really do want to see a bike path, and PennDOT did this in Philadelphia, they just, did this when they upgraded the 202 Parkway in Bucks County, they put in a shared-use path along the four-lane road, so there's precedent. So PennDOT said, oh, put the shared-use path on your official map, so we have something to say, so we want to add that, and then looking at this connection, this was the one that, when they were doing the Harvest Fields Trails, they had wanted to take the Harvest Field Trails all the way across, and Tom Songer had wanted to do a hike-bikeway all the way across to Rothrock, but there's a property owner in there who does not want to sell his property, or have people on his property, and there's extreme wetlands in there, so that's what made it not feasible. So if we can find a way to, you know, perhaps show that bike ped path along 322 up to, because PennDOT said they realize as they're doing the connector project, there are going to be other little ancillary projects they're going to do along the way, I think that would be something we should add, just because that'll help our case.
So we're not removing this, we're amending it, or removing it and putting up a new, a new statement regarding that connectivity?
Right.
Okay.
What's, what's the potential development of the vacant property, just, I guess, to the east, or I mean, to the west of Bear Meadows Road?
So, that property is currently zoned agricultural, and is outside of the regional growth boundary and sewer service area, so probably the most it could be used for, in terms of an intensive use, would be housing. I'm not certain what potential there is in there, just because of the wetland issues, but it's, it's going to be limited by, by what they can do with all that septic as well.
Okay.
I know the further you go to the south on that property, it's very wet, from my understanding.
Yeah. That's the driveway.
I mean, I guess, if need be, the access.
Could be, go up into that prop, this pedestrian or bike path could go up into that property.
That's what they had looked at, and it, it, they tried to route it through another property that was up above, and then they tried to move it down to avoid that other property, and it's very wet in there. One of our guys in our maintenance crew actually hunts up through there, and he said, there are times of the year you can't get anywhere near there, because it's that wet.
Alright, okay. So I think that more or less summarizes the, the changes that, you know, maybe the Parks and Rec Committee and staff, you know, had some differing opinions on, but otherwise, for the most part, a lot of these facilities are recommended for removal, either because they've been done, or properties have developed, and it's no longer really feasible to, to move some of these things forward. So, I think what we're looking for is any additional input from the commission tonight. The goal would be to just get the map cleaned up, so that you are seeing the facilities that you want to keep on there, or at least further discuss, and then we're also making the recommendation that the planning commission and Parks and Rec Committees potentially appoint a joint subcommittee to work together. This is just a, it's a big project, and to do it with a, in a, in a joint meeting setting on a regular basis would be complicated, it might be easier with the subcommittee to talk about these things, and even put together that connectivity plan if need be.
So, they did, the Parks and Rec Committee did appoint three people at their meeting, so if you guys want to pick.
We can do that.
And the people on Zoom, if you guys want to pick three people, that would be great, and then I told the Parks and Rec Committee, was like, when are we doing this? I'm like, we have some other things we got to worry about first, so it might be later October timeframe.
Anyone on Zoom have comments or questions on the things that we've been discussing?
No additions.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, who on the planning commission is interested in serving on a subcommittee with members of Parks and Rec to, to move this official map project forward?
So we got three on this one, and one on.
One on parking.
Parking.
Mm-hmm. We already have people repping, repping with some center region committees. Anyone, anyone that this really moves you to say, yes, yes, sign me up?
Yes, yes, sign me up.
Oh, Sedalia, look at you.
This is Sedalia, I would, I would be honored to support this subcommittee.
Great, thank you very much.
Let me think about it.
Okay.
Let me look at my schedule.
Okay, and I, I would consider, I would consider participating myself, but I would want to defer if there's someone else who wants to jump in.
And I honestly don't think it's going to be a huge commitment.
No.
It might be one or two meetings, I would think.
One or two meetings, fine.
Yep. Oh, there you go, Bob said one or two meetings are fine.
Bob and Chris said they'd be on.
Yep, okay.
Bob and Chris are both in?
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, let's move on, anything else on that, before we do so? Draft residential zoning districts, thanks for your work on this, and for highlighting the major changes, or, or suggested amendments, it's really interesting, as we look to see how we can optimize, in a fair way, you know, housing here in Harris Township. Are there members of the public for whom this is an item of interest for you tonight? There are not. Okay, Mark, please walk us through this.
Yeah, so, this was something that had been discussed most recently at your July meeting, and this is a, just a review of our residential zoning districts, in an attempt to try to update a few of these districts, to hopefully provide some additional development opportunities for the limited amount of land area we have remaining within the regional growth boundary. We also are hoping just to improve the clarity of the regulations, as well, just to make it a little easier to administer. So as you noted here, there were some bullet points that kind of go over what has changed. In terms of the, the R1 district, there really were no changes, it was just more a formatting and updating the intent statement. If the rural zoning is adopted, even close to what it is, is at in terms of mapping, we won't have any more R1 land outside of the growth boundary, so things like that will be updated, just to clarify. Probably the biggest changes here are in this mixed-density residential district, which would be the new R2 district, and this district, as we talked about before, could possibly apply to some larger tracts of land that we have in the growth boundary, and as we had discussed previously, and the planning commission was interested in, it would allow for single-family detached dwellings, duplexes, and townhomes, and, and keep in mind, those are all new definitions as well, that the planning commission had discussed, and then we'd also allow some other non-residential uses. So, one of the things, hearing back from your previous input of what you were looking for, the duplexes and townhomes would be permitted at a density of 10 dwelling units to the acre, that's generally consistent with what we have now, but it's worded a little differently. Right now, we were looking at our ordinance, the way it's worded, it would be very difficult to establish these types of units on fee simple lots, because you need to have a fairly large lot area just to do a townhome, so I don't, how you'd ever be able to, to subdivide that up, other than in a condominium type situation. So, we were taking a little different tact with, with that to allow for it. The minimum width requirements were removed from the uses table, and moved into the general regulations themselves, just to help differentiate if a unit, unit is under common ownership, condominium-style ownership, or on a fee simple lot. We, one of the things that was discussed was a buffer, so 100 feet between any duplex or townhome and any adjacent R1 zone property, to try to provide some type of buffer, to hopefully minimize any perceived impacts to existing neighborhoods, requiring sidewalks, I know was commented on, that, that more connectivity, as well as other pedestrian and bicycle facilities, very similar to how we have it worded in our existing corridor overlay. Landscape buffer yards was also discussed, and it's something we'd wanted to get a little more feedback from the planning commission on. We have landscaping requirements currently in our corridor overlay district, but that don't always apply in residential settings, it's normally non-residential, so we wanted to get a feeling it had been talked about previously by the commission, what kind of buffering you'd want to see on the exterior of maybe new residential development, and then, that's kind of an overview of what we've drafted thus far. Our hope was, as we've done in the past, to take these regulations, if the planning commission finds them agreeable, and take a couple of these vacant properties, and model them out to show what they could maybe develop to look like. We think that's an important tool to visualize the potential of an ordinance. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any feedback on anything in here, and, you know, if you have any thoughts on landscaping, or anything else, and then we'll move forward with whatever the commission's interested in doing.
Comments or questions from our live or virtual participants?
I have a question about the landscaping features, are they specific to any type of aesthetics, in terms of like the, the project itself, the, the buildings that are going to be built, are they, is there a specific design that's, that's being looked at?
For the buildings, no, and, and the landscaping, the thought was, as I recall, the, the planning commission talked about maybe having just a buffer around the perimeter of properties as they abut to other existing neighborhoods, and I think it was even discussed of maybe having those type of stand. And I think it was even discussed of maybe having those type of standards in other residential districts as well. This is just the first one we're, we're kind of looking at and developing. But there weren't any discussions about any type of design standards either for landscaping or buildings to, uh, in these regulations. It would just be a requirement that you have so many plantings per hundred feet.
Does that answer your questions, Sedalia?
Um, I guess the reason why I ask that question is because in terms of the utilities, um, structures that sometimes go up in the residential, is there, is that being considered in terms of hiding any of that? I'm just concerned, I'm just asking, I should say, not concerned, but just asking.
That's, and that's a good, good question if there's any interest in having any type of, uh, standards specifically that address, you know, non-residential elements of a development like utilities. That could always be incorporated too if it's something the commission's interested in.
Are you looking tonight for, for like so many plantings for? For foot or type, types or, or is that getting too much in the weeds?
I think that's a little.
No pun intended.
A little bit into the weeds, I guess. My thought is how intensive were you thinking a landscape buffer should be? Are you thinking this is something that's going to completely screen one development from another? Or is it just simply a feature you think is important around the perimeter just to kind of add some visual buffering? And just generally add some value to that part of the, of the area, of the, of the community?
There's going to be connectivity on the sidewalks that are required. Are most of the rest of the adjoining properties that we're looking at here, are that, do they already have sidewalks? Would there be any urgency in putting sidewalks in so that, you know, we want people to be able to get from one place to another. If the sidewalk ends at the end of the R2 property and turns into somebody else's yard, it kind of defeats the purpose, you know?
I would say for the most part, I think, looking at, we don't have a, a sidewalk inventory, but I don't think we have a vast number of sidewalks in the township, generally speaking.
No.
Most of the residential developments do not have them.
So the hope that eventually there would be something as things progress would be connectivity at the street.
And would a sidewalk require a requirement for these new, new developments?
Yeah, that's in there that says that it, it would be required along those streets, so.
I mean, to me, requiring something that's going to hide or shield a structure seems excessive. That's something that enhances visually, you break it up, you know, a wall of new buildings with some plantings of a, of a variety of, of types and sizes and that, that makes sense. So I don't know if we need to get that, um, codified, so to speak, but that's my view on it.
Well, I know one of the things we're, that we're looking at now with the wireless facilities ordinance update. So the state changed the law, Act 50 was passed. And when they passed Act 50, they took away our ability to say that you couldn't put a wireless facilities, wireless facility in the village zoning district, which is how our ordinance was written now because we wanted to protect the village. So one of the things the Cohen Law Group is looking at for us are stealth design guidelines, which are allowed under the law. Um, so we're looking at putting those in, in that draft ordinance so that we could then say, okay, if you're going to put this in a residential area, you're going to put it in the village, you can't just make it some monstrosity that is going to stick out like a sore thumb.
Right.
We have to allow co-location too on our facilities, which means the historic streetlights could have a wireless facility on top of it. So that's also especially important that we have some kind of stealth guidelines so that the wireless facility that goes on top just really looks like an extension of that pole and doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
Are there limitations on what our guidelines could be?
I believe there are, and that's also why we hired the Cohen Law Group to do this for us. They did the original draft for us because when I, we looked at the ordinance and I did a webinar through the municipal league on it, there's a lot of nuances to that law and I didn't want to make a mistake with, you know, how we were updating that. I wanted to make sure all of our bases were covered and that we could take advantage of some of these things, like the stealth guidelines.
But can we make them fairly restrictive?
I, I think we can to a point, yes.
Kent, anything to?
No, I'm, I'm. I think, yeah, if we, if you could have different requirements based upon the zoning district you're in, then I think that would, that would be beneficial.
I, uh, as far as the planting and the buffering standards, I, I think we're, we, we're off the deep end with that a little bit now anyhow. Of, of the things that I've seen that happened at, uh, Mountain View, at the, um, Township Building, you're overplanting and you're requiring too many plants. The trees are too close together. Uh, they're not going to, they're not going to grow correctly and we're just requiring way too many. Is there any way that our standard or we could revisit that? Since we don't have that much development in Harris Township, can we make each development under review by us and the supervisors? And decide, because each piece of property is unique and just having a standard saying plant forty-two trees doesn't necessarily work. I mean, I went over the tactic building and you've got white pines five feet apart from each other. Well, what the hell are they going to look like in five years or 10 years? You're going to cut half and come down.
Yeah, that's right.
Jeff, if you remember the, uh, the conversations we had when we were talking about the village commercial zoning district. Uh, we, we specifically, it specifically exempted the, uh, that village commercial zoning district from the corridor overlay regulations in large part, uh, because we've recognized for a number of years and we've talked about this for a number of years, that, uh, the planting regulations, uh, aren't the best and they're, they're probably outdated. As an alternative in village commercial, we created a new buffer standard that we think is going to work a lot better. And our stated intention all along has been, as we do these ordinance amendments, we're going to review the, uh, you know, the planting requirements in each zoning district or zoning district group that we review and do something similar to what we did in village commercial. Um, so that is our intent here also. Eventually what our, what our hope is, is that we'll be able to do away with the planting requirements in, uh, the corridor overlay district altogether and, and have, uh, uh, some more sensible planting requirements. I will say that, uh, the, the planting regulations themselves as they exist now, for the most part, give a great deal of flexibility to the developers, uh, when they have to plant the plants. We tell them how many they have to have for a linear one hundred feet on a property line. And, and the, and the, uh, the smallest number you're allowed to have is three canopy trees, I think six understory trees and nine shrubs per one hundred feet of property line, uh, when you do a development. I don't think there's any way that can be construed to be overplanting when you're requiring a total of nine trees and nine shrubs per one hundred feet. I think people have not done a terrific job, uh, spacing the trees out. I think in, in large part, a lot of people have tried to keep wide vistas open so they can see their buildings and their displays and things like that, uh, from the corridors, trees from the arterial streets. And they've grouped the trees together to a large extent, which causes the problems that you described. That they're too close together, they're going to grow into each other and a lot of them aren't going to survive. So I, I think, I think it's a combination of not outstanding design and some, some regulations that need updated because they've been in existence for thirty or forty years and we're well on our way to doing that.
I was just wondering if we could have a little bit more control over that as a review, uh, when they bring the project to us.
We, we can so long as we have some standards on which to base our decisions. We can't just say you're going to have to plant trees and then allow it up to the planning commission board to decide what they're going to do on a particular property. That's just, that's not, just not a smart way to go about it.
Perfect, Jeff.
The Shade Tree Commission, we actually walked the Township's maintenance facility because we had thirty-eight sweet gums that were planted as part of our project that had died. Um, so we walked the entire property. It's a mile around our entire property out there with Scott Burke from Scott's Landscaping and talked to him. Um, they are very interested in, some of the species that are listed in our ordinance are very out of date. They're very interested in looking at the buffering and helping if they can with the buffering because we have people on the Shade Tree Commission that are very versed in trees and how to plant trees. But Scott Burke pointed out, the main problem, and Todd touched on this, is that when you're doing a development, and this is true even in, of the case of the Township's maintenance facility, we didn't hire a landscape architect to draw up separate plans for the buffer yard. They, you know, our architect, our engineer, Pentera, they put the trees in, they put the locations in. And what Scott Burke had said was, Scott Burke has said, I've approached Pentera and said, just keep us on call and we can help you do these plans. Because he said as we're walking around, and you know, the great thing about our buffer yard regulations, you have to meet the number, right? So Todd kept drilling into my head before we walked our mile around the building, you have to meet the number. But we can do some flexibility in terms of groupings of plantings. We changed a lot of things out. And Scott said, like, if we had done a plan to begin with, with a landscape architect, we could have done that. I'll tell you, across the street from our building is a business that has way too many trees planted, way too close together. And I know there's going to be a problem in the not to.
There's something still, yeah, apples are going to die.
Yeah, and so some of it is, some of it is that the plant species that are in our ordinance are not great. Some of it is maybe the ordinance has too many trees, maybe or maybe not, has too many trees required. But a lot of it is who's doing the actual plan when it comes time to figure out what trees to put in. So I think there's an opportunity, the Shade Tree Commission is very interested. Scott Burke gave us some good ideas. I think there's an opportunity to perhaps reach out and have some conversations with the Shade Tree Commission and others about this topic because also there's a problem sourcing trees right now. There was a problem getting them out of nurseries down in, usually they come from the South Virginia area. There was a problem sourcing trees, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think, I think we could do some work on that and it sounds like you guys are going to come up with a little bit better idea about that in the future. So I'm happy.
Let's, let's think if there are some professional landscape architects in the, in the township who would maybe donate their?
We actually have one on the Shade Tree Commission.
Well, there you go. That's great. Okay, so Mark, I think you're ready to model, model a couple? You got a few little things here to, to tweak?
I'll do that and I'll just throw in some very minimal landscaping to make it have a little bit of color and a little.
There you go.
Make it look a little green there.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe some ambers and golds this time of year.
We'll try to find some nice, different, different tones of trees.
There you go. Okay, uh, we have as the, the last item for our business, uh, portion of the meeting, um, Village District Parking Committee. The board assigned twelve-ish, thirteen, thirteen people to this, uh, committee. A nice, nice cross-section of, of some familiar volunteer names and some new ones. Um, and it seems like it'd be good to have one of us connected to that committee to, um, listen and, uh, opine as, as needed. It's a challenging project, um, in an old village like ours, uh, not, uh, developed with modern automobiles, um, and, and other vehicles. So is there someone here, well, any other background from, from staff on this, this item?
I mean, the only thing I would say is we're going to, I think, model this committee out for the small area plan, which is the committee members, and I think we're at our best when we have our residents engaged. And the committee members are going to do the heavy lifting. They're going to sit and look at the regulations and look at, you know, come up with ideas and things that we can do. It is a challenge. I think it's a challenge that we've been fighting for probably two hundred of the two hundred and some years we've been around. So we'll, we'll try to get it this time.
Good.
How long do you think this, uh, committee will be in existence?
I'm hoping it's not like a multi-year process. I'm hoping it's a couple of months and we come up with some recommendations. But it will be more than, it definitely will be more than the, uh, official map committee.
Yeah, yeah. Is there someone on the planning commission who is, uh, interested in volunteering to be our liaison to the, um, this subcommittee on, on parking in the village?
Chris, I, I wouldn't mind, um, looking in and just, uh, observing and, and offering any, uh, recommendation.
That's awesome, thank you. I think that's exactly your role, uh, would be your role, just to be a, a listener and, uh, a conduit, both directions as needed. Thank you, Sedalia.
You're welcome.
Are there any members, uh, before we move on to agenda for, for next month and reports? Anyone here, uh, with, um, in the public who have something to offer or share a comment on?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, this is Susan Bucknum and I represent Michael and Tara Emel and Nittany Meadow Farm. Um, I went to the, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting last Monday to discuss the issue of the proposed rezoning of their farm, uh, to rural residential zoning designation from agricultural. Um, and I know we're going to have the joint meeting. Um, I just, and I have to say, it is hard to hear everybody clearly on Zoom. And I, I'm only speaking just because I thought I heard the township manager say something in the beginning of the meeting that, um, the township is going to contact the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General to review, um, the acre issue with them. Um, which is fine, um, but I, I'm pretty sure I heard, um, the township manager make a comment that she was of the understanding that acre only applies to commercial agricultural production operations. And, um, that's true, um, and that's what the Emels Farm is and has been since it was established in the early eighteen hundreds. The definition for acre, uh, for normal agricultural operation is the same as under the Right to Farm Act. And I reviewed all that in the video that you can watch. But, you know, to the extent that an opinion is going to be sought from the Attorney General's office, I think that the correct facts need to be relayed to the Attorney General's office in order to get the correct opinion. So, and I'm presuming that your solicitor would be the person that would contact the Attorney General. And I, I've already talked to your solicitor and provided him with some information, but I'll circle back and talk to him again because I know that we don't need to get deep into the weeds in this, for this meeting tonight. But I was just concerned, um, when I heard the township manager's comments, um, to make clear that my client's farm is a commercial agricultural production operation. It falls within the definition, definition of normal agricultural operation under the Right to Farm Act. But I will contact your solicitor tomorrow and make sure that he understands the correct factual, factual, um, scenario in order to seek, um, an opinion that would be applicable. So I just wanted to, that, that just concerned me when I heard that. Um, so I wanted to make the planning commission aware of that.
Thank you.
I don't want to interrupt, but we were gonna, I was hoping to seek an opinion on our entire ordinance to send that to the, uh, to the Attorney General's office and have them review our language. Because I think that's in reading on the acre law that, you know, the reading that I've done, the places where it's been challenged, it's been challenged because the ordinance itself is not, um, you know, inconsistent, it is very inconsistent with the law. So I was going to see if the Attorney General's office would just review the entire ordinance itself to make sure we didn't have any pitfalls in there. Um, I'm going to double back with the solicitor tomorrow morning to talk with him about, um, what we're planning on doing. And also I'm going to see if he can attend our, our joint meeting on October fourth as well.
Right, that's, yeah, I understand because I do think there's concerns about, um, the restrictions on limited wineries also, I mean, but that's not my client's direct issue. But I, I think that, I, I noticed that when I read the proposed ordinance. So, um, yeah, that's a good idea. I just definitely wanted to be clear, you know, if you're asking for an insight and, and opinion from the Attorney General's office, that the correct facts get relayed, so.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, October agenda items.
Mark?
Well, I, I, that meeting I was probably not going to be able to attend.
Oh, that's right. Mark won't be here in October, your October eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we, we possibly could have a plan, I think, though.
They might have a plan, yeah.
A development plan to review?
Yeah, Todd, Todd, do we have any other plans in the pipeline?
Not that I can immediately recall and, uh, it is the fervent hope of the person that submitted the plan that we're talking about that it will be on the planning commission agenda in October. We still have to see a revised plan and have a large number of the comments resulting from the first review be satisfactorily addressed before I can make the planning commission's agenda.
Okay. Um, so Mark, without you, we'll, we can wait on the rural, excuse me, the residential probably till November.
Yeah.
Um, we'll have, I would imagine, some follow-up following the joint meeting earlier in October to, to be on our agenda. to be on our agenda. Maybe some, some updates on official MAP if those groups can get together. Amy, you seeing anything else at this point?
I'm not seeing anything else at this point, no.
Any other, any other items that commission members want to suggest be on an agenda for next month? Okay, moving on then to, to number seven, reports, are there zoning permits that are...
There are zoning permits, I'll pass them.
That are going to go around. Amy, can you report to us on CRPC, please?
My report for the CRPC is that the meeting scheduled for September 2nd was canceled due to no urgency in items for an agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 7th, it will be at 12:15, and joint meeting with, I think it's Transportation and Land Use Committee.
Okay. Thank you. We received, hopefully you all received by email from George, his, his thorough report on the Center County Technical Committee, you know, of note, the highway, the highway matter that's going to be around for a while. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Any comments?
They're ending stories.
Right. Any comments or questions from, from George's, George's report? Okay, thank you. Amy, you want to run down through recent actions by the, by the supervisors, please?
Actually, Bob was going to give the Spring Creek Watershed Commission report.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had added that, and I, and I didn't get in there. Bob, sorry about that.
That was my first meeting to the commission. The Spring Creek Watershed Commission meets twice, or once, six times a year, every other month. And it's mainly a listening organization, coordinating organization regarding the Spring Creek watershed, educational, has, as I understand it, no true formal authority to legislate or impose or create regulations. So they heard, we heard from, about, from a woman named Laura Fowler, who's with Penn State Law, and she discussed a lot of the issues that go on there, happening with the Chesapeake Bay. And Pennsylvania, obviously, is one of the major contributors to that, the problems down there. So I guess in a nutshell, they're making progress towards cleaning up, there are some good things happening, but it's just very, very slow. And a lot of that is because of all the different constituencies and parochial areas within Commonwealth within Pennsylvania, with Maryland and so forth. So you're trying to really work from the bottom up to make a lot, an awful lot of change. So, but, you know, there are positive things happening, but they're not on their plan to make, you know, significant changes in the next 15 years, or 10 or 15 years. Locally, there's same types of issues, trying to draw consensus around how you coordinate the plans and coordinate management of the Spring Creek watershed itself. I mean, this, the commission's made up of representatives from all the townships and the communities, the boroughs. So you have Bellefonte represented, State College, and they run into the same problem. You know, everybody's, you know, has their own interest, a lot of it is, you know, things that have been built into their communities for a long time, you have property owners and so forth. So there's a lot of concern that there might be people stepping on other, the commission might be stepping on people's toes. So that's out there. State College Borough is studying the impact of microplastics in the watershed. I don't know, there was a article in one of the local magazines here a month or two ago, I read that. So there's, they're looking at it, there's no current EPA standard on it, so there's no consensus of what exactly to do with it, but they are studying it, and they would like to move and continue to move on that and make...
That's great.
...something. And then finally, membership, each township or each body pays 10 cents per person for dues to the, whatever the fee, to the, contributes to the state, or the watershed commission. And since we have 5,913 people, according to the 2020 census, we owe $591.
A bargain.
So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I know microplastics are a big issue in the, in the Great Lakes, actually. You think of the, a hair product that has like little scrubby, scrubby bubbles in it, little microplastic in it, and it gets right into the wastewater system and right into the Great Lakes, and it's...
It's a food chain.
Bad, bad, bad.
Well, if I understood it right, they don't look at it as a groundwater issue right now.
It's stormwater runoff, probably, or sewage.
And it's surface water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so you, you see it in Spring Creek, but you don't necessarily see it in the drinking water.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
Hate that plastic taste.
Thank you. Board of Supervisors, recent actions, please?
Board of Supervisors discussed the State College Area Connector Project, and they formulated their official comments on the alignments. You probably saw, we emailed those out on the e-newsletter system, it's also on our Facebook page and our website. The board indicated they will only support alignment 144-3. We put maps of the possible alignments in your packets, we have maps sitting out on our Windows sill. We actually have a resident who lives out on Somerset Drive, along Route 322, who put together a survey, and he's trying to get folks to support 144-3, that alignment, and I'm actually going to send that out tomorrow in an e-update to the township. He's, he's been beaten down doors, we've had, had reports of a lot of residents that have been banding together and reaching out to their neighbors. We had a woman today who stopped in and picked up 30 flyers to take out to her neighbors, because it is vitally important that we speak to Penn Dot about our concerns. The meeting is September 22nd and 23rd, from 1:00 to 8:00 PM, and that's at the large ballroom at Mountain View Country Club. And this is critically important, that Penn Dot hear from us. Their background mapping was old and out of date. They had pulled, they, they told Mark they had pulled the data off of the Center County Open GIS layer, that was the wrong ag security data, even though our data was updated and recorded with the county in 2018. They've since corrected that, they did contact us and got the correct information. But I think that, you know, the supervisors are very concerned that based on all of that, they've made some assumptions that don't work with what's happened the last, especially the last seven years, with us being the fastest growing municipality in the county. So again, it's super important that everybody speaks, speak and go to that meeting. The board also approved the replot of the lots 3 through 6 of the Pivorato Estate subdivision and the Lot 2 of the Rollis subdivision. They approved the Nittany Grove revised final land development plan, they approved the Campbell Track subdivision component 2 planning module, and they appointed the members of the Village Parking Committee. Oh, and they approved, sorry, they approved a proposal to hire the Cohen Law Group to update our wireless facilities ordinance.
What does a replot of lots mean?
So there were several lots that had already existed up there. I believe what they did, lots 3 through 6, there was, they replotted them, changed some of the boundaries, and ended up, I think, with one fewer lot than they had before. And they also consolidated some land with an adjacent parcel as well. So it was really just taking some land and re-subdiving it to a different number of lots.
Well, board has been busy, and there's a lot going on here. This is fascinating about the, and I agree, even the name of the 322 connector is not good, and misleading, and incomplete, so maybe we can, both semantics and practical ways can, can, can shift the thinking, the thinking there. I do have a question about this, I mean, my geography is such as is, this 144 build alternatives, that's going up and over Nittany.
Yep.
About three, four miles from its terminus at Lamont.
Yep.
Yep, that's going to be a pretty price tag, isn't it? Okay, anything else tonight, Zoom, Zoom members, Zoom attendees? Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Engineering friends have told me on this connector thing that one of the routes has already been completely engineered by Penn Dot, does anybody know anything about that?
Penn Dot had a special meeting just with the local officials, August 31st, and in talking to them, I don't know that they've completely engineered a route, but I think they have an idea of where they would like the road to go in terms of the amount of impacts. That's what they indicated to me, but I think they didn't know some of the impacts along that road.
And second thing, I didn't know if anybody knew, but Tussie Mountain sold.
Oh. Is that a question or a statement?
It's, it's, I think it closes in October, and it's, from what I understand, we'll see the plans, it's going to be a group of...
Ah, fascinating.
We'll see if that actually happens.
Well, with the, with the, with the connectors we're talking about, I guess it's bike and brew time, isn't it?
Bike and brew, yeah. Anyhow, those are just a little, little information that I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill?
I am reluctant to make the statement, I hate to have to do it, but the House is under contract, and we're supposed to close the middle of October. My 60-some-year tenure in Harris Township is going to come to an end, and I'm afraid I have to either resign or retire from the board, I'll let you guys decide which is the appropriate verb. But I have...
You can never leave Harris Township alive.
Well, there, there will be a part of me that is here forever, but unfortunately, the real estate won't be, and as a result, I can't stay on the board any longer. I have to thank and blame Bob Igoe for asking me to be involved in the small area plan. God, so many years ago, I can't remember how long ago it was.
One or two years.
And I have thoroughly enjoyed the five or six years that I've been on the board, and I hope I've made a little bit of an improvement in one thing or another, and I wish all of you great success in the future, and as much patience as we've all had to exhibit over the past half decade. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Your circumstances are what they are, and maybe it is a resignation or a retirement, but we will, we will miss you for sure.
So, I leave Bolzberg reluctantly.
Hate to see you go. Okay, any, anyone else? Meeting adjourned, thank you.